Good evening, I'm Mayor Dean Burkey and I'd like to welcome everybody this evening, November 2nd, 2020, to Durango City Council's virtual City Council meeting. Fay, may we have a roll call, please?
Counselor Batine?
Here.
Counselor Noseworthy?
Present.
Counselor Youssef?
Here.
Mayor Paratim Baxter?
Present.
Mayor Burkey?
Present. Thank you so much. Item 3 is Identification of Any Actual or Perceived Conflicts of Interest. And I might ask councilors if we have any perceived or real conflicts of interest with any of the items on the agenda this evening. Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, item 4, which is Public Participation. If you might bear with me, I can read a little bit of an instructional effort here because we are virtual and this section of the agenda is set aside for public to provide comments or ask questions regarding items that do not otherwise appear on the agenda. So if you talk about something else on the agenda, just hold till that item comes up. But this is public comment for virtually anything you would like to address council. City Council will not respond to questions from the DIAAS, but citizens should address their comments to the City Council directly. As this is a virtual meeting, the avenues for public participation have been adjusted. The public may view the meeting live on Durango Government Television, DGOV, on Spectrum Cable, Channel 19 or 98, over the air with antenna public on Channel 10, or streaming online at durangogov.org. That's DGOV or facebook.com/cityofdurango. An email link for public participation comments must be submitted no later than noon on Monday preceding the meeting. Then that would have been Friday for this particular meeting. Each email should contain the corresponding agenda item in the subject line of the email. The sender's full name and address should be included for the record. If comment by email is not possible, comments may also be placed in the drop box located in front of the City Hall, no later than noon on the day before preceding the meeting. Comments directed at a legislative public hearing subject will be read into the record as part of the hearing process. All other comments will be made available to City Council or Board within a reasonable amount of time. Email comments should be directed to publiccomment@durangogov.org. Members of the public who wish to provide verbal comments can use the virtual meeting information at the top of this agenda to join the meeting. Please ensure that you have a Zoom installed on your computer or mobile device prior to the meeting. The mayor will provide additional details during the meeting when the public comment is accepted. So with that, anybody that has a public comment, please use the raise hand function. And if you are dialing in, you can use your telephone, press *9 to raise your hand. And our moderator will announce the next person to speak and invite you into the meeting. So with that, lengthy ovation for our virtual protocol here. Mitchell, do we have any guests that would like to provide public comment today?
Yes, good evening, Mayor. I do see someone here. John Simpson, it is your turn to speak. Please introduce yourself, give us your address, and you have three minutes.
Mayor Burkey, my name is John Simpson. I live at 1831 Crestview Drive. I'm going to discuss tonight item 11.1, municipal campaign finance violations. I just want to compliment Amy Phillips, who did an excellent job putting that together. I think the Secretary of State kind of put us in a difficult position where the clerk has to handle any sort of violations by her supervisors or councilors. And given the situation, she did a great job putting the rules together. And yeah, just want us to think that thing kind of ended up pretty well. And hopefully going forward, that document is put on the shelf and never needed again in the future. I think the last two elections, we've learned a lot and going forward, really looking forward to how the elections are handled maybe a little bit differently. But once again, I want you guys to know what a great job Amy Phillips did in putting that together. Thank you, Dean.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. I appreciate that. And yeah, if you have any other comments, we'll wait till that comes up on the agenda, but thanks for those comments. Mitchell, any other folks in the wings?
We do have quite a few attendees. No one else has raised their hand yet. I do see that we have a person that has called in on the phone. If you are here for public participation on the phone, you can press *9 to raise your hand. Mayor, I'm not seeing anybody else.
Okay, well, thank you. If you see anybody in the next few minutes, let me know and we'll... Otherwise, we'll move on. Item 5.1, Proclamations and Presentations. I think for the next few weeks, we are going to need to address the COVID, the worsening COVID situation that we have in our communities. And so this evening, we're starting that trend off with Leanne Jalon, Executive Director of San Juan Basin Public Health. And Leanne, can you help us with a few of the things that are happening in our own community and what the new protocols might be?
I can. I prepared a presentation on the aspects of the response that we're currently engaged in. But if you just want it on level of restrictions, I... Did you just want a Safer at Home Level 2 update?
No, I think, let's go with what you had prepared to share with us this evening and do that. If there's any other questions from councilors that might be specific to issues within our community, we can address those after you're done.
Okay, can you see my slides?
You bet.
Okay, since I haven't been, I don't know, since the mask order discussion, I don't think I have been a part of City Council. So I thought I would start from kind of the beginning of how we are working to contain disease. And then the Safer at Home restrictions that La Plata County is currently under is mitigation strategy to contain disease, which is one of four ways that we work to contain disease. So I'm just going to kind of go through that setup before we get to the Safer at Home restrictions that will work. So let's see how this works. I'm going to make you guys smaller so you can see my screens. So San Juan Basin Public Health, this is a picture from the 416 fire, and we are in an emergency response. As a political subdivision of the state of Colorado, San Juan Basin Public Health performs local public health for La Plata and Archeleta Counties. And we are currently in a declared emergency, much like communities in wildland fires and serving in the emergency response role. First, there are kind of four components to how we contain or control communicable disease. They are surveillance, investigation, control, and mitigation. So I'm just going to go through it in those steps. So surveillance is how we know what individuals are currently infectious so that we can box in those individuals through case investigations and contact tracing, quarantine, and isolation. But it also tells us what the burden of disease is in the community. And if the burden of disease is greater than you can box in, then you have to move to kind of generalized mitigation strategy to lower spread of infection. So with any communicable disease, it starts with surveillance. Depending on how much disease you have, you either control it by containing individual cases or you control it through broad mitigation strategies. So the cases, as they have been reported in the state of Colorado, this is a graph that shows you the change in cases week to week. So if we look at October, we can see that we had a 34% increase in cases, a 27% over the next week, and then a 23% over the week after that. So Colorado, this is a Colorado number, not a local number. Colorado is experiencing tremendous case growth. We believe that our RNOT number is around 1.5, which means that we have uncontrolled spread across the state of Colorado. And in fact, we had a visit, an actual live in-person visit from Dr. Deborah Birx from the White House Task Force today to talk about Colorado's uncontrolled spread as demonstrated by these numbers. If we look at the most recent numbers where we compare to other states, this shows that Colorado is in a high incidence rate, where we are in what the White House has labeled the red zone, which is we have over 175 cases per 100,000 residents over seven days. Colorado chooses to report this as cases per 100,000 residents over 14 days. But it doesn't matter which way you're reporting it. This is a comparison number to see how we're doing compared to other states. So in this graph, we are showing that Colorado is in uncontrolled spread, yet we are lower than other states around the country. What you can see from this is that some of the highest incidents around the country are in the colder states of the Mountain West or the colder states of the Upper Midwest. And this is really evidence that as people are forced to move activities inside, it becomes much, much harder to contain COVID-19. And what we learned today from the White House Task Force is that Colorado is roughly four weeks behind North Dakota and South Dakota in the way that our cases are currently growing and the diffuse demographics that are experiencing high case rates. So we are watching this and trying to make adjustments very carefully because if you see on this graph, North and South Dakota have the highest rates of anywhere in the country right now. The other thing that's important to look at from this graph is that Wyoming is also very close to the top. It's one of the top five states. This does put pressure on Colorado's hospital system. We have seen individuals from Wyoming seeking hospital care in the northern counties in Colorado. So that's in Laramo and in Weld, and we're starting to see that overflow into the metro hospitals. And we are seeing quite a few metro hospitals at capacity currently, even though overall the state of Colorado is still kind of in the middle and southwest Colorado is lagging behind the rest of the state. This is our projected hospitalization graph. And this graph describes the differences in small differences in transmission reduction measures can make very big differences in how many people land in the hospital. So I think, as we all know, the peak of hospital patients at one time in Colorado back in April, when we didn't have enough tools to contain COVID-19, our peak was 888 cases in the hospital at one time in Colorado. We have since then been averaging about 200 individuals in the hospital at any given time. Over the last week, we've seen that rise to well over 600. It is on trajectory to be past peak, so past 900 Coloradans in the hospital in the next week to 10 days. And the difference is, is if we practice 67% transmission reduction versus 65% transmission reduction, you can see how this graph plays out when we will overtake peak hospitalizations from April. So when we talk about what our success in something like face coverings or social distancing or staying at home, the way that we are kind of measuring that right now is in a aggregate transmission reduction number. It's a percentage number. And right now, we believe that Colorado is in that green line, which is a 65% transmission reduction number, which does not keep us from overwhelming healthcare in the next couple of weeks. So the ask to the community is to think about what your activities are differently and work as hard as we can to limit opportunities to spread COVID-19. Then moving into our local case data, we have surpassed 500 cases in San Juan Basin Public Health's jurisdiction. And as you can see, La Plata County is the purple line. Archeleta County is the blue line. Currently, La Plata County's cases are growing faster than Archeleta County's. We also track non-resident cases for both of our counties because we also work to case investigate, contact trace, quarantine, and isolate non-residents because that can lead to spread in the community. So we track those numbers. They're not included in these graphs because these graphs show what the burden is across residents of our community. This graph, I think, just demonstrates the changes in cases in the community. And as you'll see, all the way over on the right-hand side of it, there's a tremendous amount of activity kind of consistent with the growth that we're seeing around the state. Again, our growth is lagging far behind the rest of the states, but we are very concerned that the diffuse growth that we are seeing here will look like the rest of the state in the next couple of weeks. This graph shows you cases by symptom onset. When there are delays in getting test results for a variety of reasons, the largest reason has been the increased volume of testing and increased demand for testing. It interferes with having timely results. So we also graph our cases by symptom onset date in addition to case report date so that we can know the difference of when disease is spreading versus when we're able to investigate it. The two-week cumulative incidence, so we talked about this earlier. The White House Coronavirus Task Force uses a case incident rate per 100,000 residents over seven days. Colorado uses it over 14 days. So you can see from this graph that Archeleta County has been kind of hovering around 50 cases per 100,000 residents over 14 days for the last couple of weeks, whereas La Plata County has been steadily increasing since October, actually probably since the end of September, and is now up to, as of today, 164 cases per 100,000 residents over 14. Our local transmission data, and unfortunately, the tools that we have to investigate cases in the state of Colorado were being redesigned as we speak. They were not designed well for this type of communicable disease and we're not able to capture all of the information that we needed over the last eight months. We do have new databases now. We are working hard. Our team is actually volunteering to be on the state work group to create opportunity in that tool to better track transmission data because if we understand where cases are growing in our community, we can do a better job of targeted interventions. So with that, we have about 50% of our case investigations from September and October that have been able to give us detailed analyzable transmission data. So with that, we have over 50% of cases we're working or volunteering outside the home. 40% of cases reported going to work while symptomatic. So this is a really, really important stat to linger on. This is something that we can do a whole lot better as a community around, which is really, really reminding people, we should not be going to work if we have symptoms. We should not be going to gatherings if we have symptoms. We should not be going to church, to organized events, that sort of thing. So we need to really get that message out. 26% of our cases report that they had attended community events or gatherings in the 14 days before they became symptomatic. We're not seeing a lot of our cases driven by travel, as evidenced by these stats. And then we are seeing over half of our cases knowing that they had had contact with someone confirmed or suspected of having COVID-19. The other thing that didn't make this slide, but a full third of our cases don't have any idea where they caught it, which is an indication that you do have a widespread community spread. So it is important to have testing available in a community. There is a metric for the amount of testing that we should have in any community to effectively control disease. That's 150 tests per day per 100,000 residents. So we achieve that in both counties served by San Juan Basin Public Health through partnership with Animisurgical, Access Health, Mercy Regional Medical Center, Pagosa Springs Medical Center, Pagosa Medical Group, and Archeleta Integrated Health. So we do have information up here about how to access our free community testing. There's also testing at Cedar Diagnostics. We're increasing right now. We're working on a plan to increase qualified partner testing. So for P through 12 education for first responders, for critical government services, we are trying to set up an additional testing site. There'll be some more to come on that if we can get all of the pieces to fall into place so that we can ensure that, you know, critical services are available in the community if we continue to see case growth that is predicted for Colorado. So we're working on that. And then we just learned today that there may become additional testing resources available to the state of Colorado because we have been deemed a high-growth state by the White House Coronavirus Task Force. So if that becomes available, we will integrate that into the planning that we are currently doing to make more testing available to our government and school partners. So that's the surveillance piece. Disease investigation is, this is how we box in disease. So we, you know, contact tracing is helping learn what the RNOT is, who someone could have passed disease on to. So this is just a description of what our case investigators do. They, you know, learn from a case, who they had contact with. We recommend testing for anyone that they had contact with. We isolate people who are sick or test positive, and we quarantine people who have been exposed to COVID-19. This is a description of how it works. I won't go into all of the details on this, but the most important thing here is answer the call. So nothing that public health does in response is something we can do alone. So while we say that we are similar to firefighters in an emergency, putting water on the fire or building a fire line, the difference is that the work that we do in the community all relies on the community doing the work with us. We cannot investigate cases if people do not show up for tests. And then we can't investigate cases if people aren't willing to communicate with us about their activities so that we can continue to contain disease. And then this is just the graph, I think, that we're all familiar with, which is how we box in disease. I should say infection. Isolation is for individuals who are currently testing positive, who are currently infected. Right now in Colorado, we believe that one in 200 Coloradans is currently infectious with COVID-19. So any activities that we were getting away with over the last couple of months where we relax about our transmission precautions are going to be less successful now if one in 200 of us are currently infected. Quarantine is what we do with individuals who have potentially been exposed. It's how we ask those individuals to also help not spread disease by participating in a 14-day quarantine. Our staff can help anyone that has challenges successfully quarantine and isolate and getting the resources that they need. We have a whole system, whether it's food or housing or, you know, access to resources to pay bills through loss of work. We can help with all of that. It's important that we successfully quarantine and isolate to keep disease from spreading in the community. And then mitigation are the longer strategies. These are the general strategies that we ask the community to engage in so that we don't overwhelm our healthcare system and that we are able to have enough public health resources to investigate and control infection as it's spreading in the community. So what we're finding is many communities in Colorado have moved into higher levels of restrictions. And as they've moved into higher levels of restrictions, they've had to triage their case investigations. They're doing about 50% of their case investigations. We're still doing 100% because we believe that if we can box in cases as we find them, we will be able to keep schools open, businesses open, getting a paycheck. But mitigation is part of how we do this. And so these are the strategies that we talk about all the time, which is, you know, and we're really asking for the community to help on this. If you can work from home, please do work from home. If you are symptomatic, please do not go out. Practice our social distancing and our physical distancing. Comply with the mask order. It is still in effect. It is a very effective strategy. Hand hygiene, getting tested if you have symptoms, limiting our social gatherings. And then the additional thing in the toolbox is the exposure notification, which is an Apple, Google platform available to all Coloradans for free on their cell phones. We can get more information out to you guys about how that works. So again, these are all of the tools to mitigate in a community. There are really simple rules, which is that if we spend time outside, if we spend time six feet apart, if we wear face coverings, we will be less likely to spread infection. And so this is why infection is spreading in the colder weather states right now because it is harder to continue to do things outside. The important takeaway from this is the reason that we want individuals to wear their face coverings is because a face covering protects others. It protects people around you from experiencing your droplets. I am producing droplets right now by speaking. They are landing on my computer screen. So they are not infecting anyone. But when we are hanging out with each other and we are talking, talking loudly, laughing, we are creating droplets. Large droplets will fly across and land on somebody else and potentially make them sick. Smaller droplets can linger in the air and other people can breathe them in, not at the exact same time that you are expelling them. So what we believe about COVID-19 is that it has droplet and aerosolization spread. And so what a mask does is it contains your droplets, keeps them to you, and makes you less likely to spread your infection to someone else. The mask order is an order in the state of Colorado. There are some limited exemptions. There are penalties for businesses and individuals that are not interested in complying with the executive order in the state of Colorado. Here's a fun slide, how to wear your mask. I can't see you guys. I turned you off so I could see my slides. But I hope someone at least got a chuckle out of it. And no, that's not my dog. My dog's much cuter than that. So then Colorado, so our mitigation strategies, the restrictions that we are in in the state of Colorado is divided into stay-at-home, which were the orders we all experienced in March into the end of April. Stay-at-home gave way to Safer at Home, and Safer at Home was designed to be the transition to protect our neighbors. And protect our neighbors was going to be sort of the least restrictive way that we learned to live with this virus while we were working through, the public health community was working through a vaccine and learning how to treat the disease better so that fewer people got really sick and fewer people died, right? Like in the beginning of this, in March and April, if someone was hospitalized with COVID in Colorado, they had probably a 1 out of 5 chance of not making it out of the hospital if they were in an ICU. They had a 50 to 75% chance of not coming home from the ICU. Those stats have gotten a lot better. So part of the reason why we do the restrictions is to sort of give time for the healthcare community to catch up, to not be overwhelmed, but also to be able to treat people better, shorten their length of stay, and send people home healthier and send more people home. So that's part of what we're doing in this, in addition to making sure that we have public health infrastructure to contain disease. So where we are now is La Plata County is in Safer at Home Level 2. These are the current restrictions for Level 2. These are all available on our website. I don't think that I will go through what these are. If there are questions about them, we can talk about, you know, specifics. But Safer at Home Level 2 is where probably most counties in Colorado are currently. Quite a couple have moved to Safer at Home Level 3. Last week, we expect a whole bunch more to move to Safer at Home Level 3 in this upcoming week. And I think, as you can see, Safer at Home Level 3 is one step away from a stay-at-home order. There is nobody in Colorado that wants to go back to where we were in March and April with stay-at-home orders. Unfortunately, the case rate growth that we have right now across the state is not coming under control. It is not plateauing. And the information that we got today from the White House Task Force was that we should be able to see, you know, kind of a plateau and a decrease in the colder Upper Midwest and the colder states that are ahead of us in this type of case growth. By six weeks, they should be starting to see plateaus. They are not, which is of high level of concern for the states that are kind of lagging behind in that growth, right? If we're four weeks behind the Dakotas, which is what the characterization of where Colorado's growth is right now, and the Dakotas are growth is right now, and the Dakotas are six weeks into not being able to plateau their case rate growth, we are all looking at potentially having to take some big steps as communities, and that is not what anybody wants. So if we make adjustments now to our day-to-day activities, we can avoid this. When we do successfully get through safer-at-home, protect our neighbors, like we talked about was what Colorado envisioned as more of the long-term restrictions. And in order to qualify for the long-term, more minimal restrictions, there are some qualifications that require both meeting specific metrics and then having mitigation and containment letters of commitment from local governments, as well as hospitals, law enforcement, emergency management. So I'm putting this up here now. We are not qualifying for protect our neighbors yet, but if we are able to maintain the control of infection that we have and then bring it down, at some point, we will want to look at protect our neighbors. It will require the city of Durango to commit to the mitigation and containment plan to control disease in our community. And then I think this is my last slide. Another mitigation strategy is flu shots. It is really important that each one of us as individuals have a flu shot. You don't want to be co-infected with COVID-19 and the flu. So part of your flu shot is to protect you as an individual. But the other thing that's really important about your flu shot is that we can have heavy flu years, which require lots of healthcare and have lots of, unfortunately, lots of individuals seeking treatment in hospitals for flu. We do not, while we are worried about increased cases of COVID-19, and we are looking at a peak hospitalization for COVID-19, also want a heavy flu year. So it is also important not just to protect you as an individual, but it's to protect others around you and to protect the healthcare system. It is important that you get your flu shot. Here are all of the places where you can get flu shot, and we have lists of all of the flu clinics that San Juan Basin Public Health is putting on in addition to our community testing and sometimes in conjunction with our community testing for COVID-19. And that is it. Now I'm going to turn it back on so I can see you guys.
Thank you, Leanne. Yeah, again, that's Leanne Gilan. That's from Executive Director of San Juan Basin Health Department. Salient points, Leanne. Thank you so much for that great overview. And I think for the public to know, we are in a real crux right now of being a small community. So far, we're doing better than, as Leanne stated, better than the rest of Colorado, which is up in the Denver area. There's, they're approaching some hospital capacity issues and having real problems. We don't have those yet, but it's largely because of the good behavior and the high level of compliance in our community with transmission reduction measures. And so, you know, as we try to pull the levers and open up our community a little bit more and perhaps achieve a level-one, less restrictive situation, I think it's important to, I think, Council, we need to talk about some possible additional levels of enforcement that are enforceable by the city specifically that might help us achieve that, a higher level of transmission reduction than 65%. As we can see from Leanne's graphs, it's the difference between 65, approaching 70 is really incredible in terms of the amount of cases that enter our community. So with that, is there any other questions Council might have of Leanne while she's on? Chris?
Yeah, a couple of questions. Leanne, thanks so much for the presentation and for your time. I did want to ask, and it may be to you, it may be to Jose, our attorney, whoever wants to field this one, if you could please inform the public what we are doing to try to respond to existing either public or businesses that are refusing to comply with the government order right now? And what is our, our plan going forward? And does Council have to act relative to that?
Well, I think I can start a little bit from the city perspective. And Chief, I know that we've been getting some concerns and complaints, and I know that we've responded to a few of them over the weekend. And if you have a moment to give a quick, brief update on those, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you. So, yeah, we had numerous complaints over the weekend, over the last couple of weeks with several businesses. At this point right now, really all we can do is document those concerns and forward them on as far as the health concerns fall into play. However, there are other criminal complaints and concerns that have arisen that include vandalism and other concerns out there that have to deal with just social disorder, public disorder-type crimes. And we've made some arrests on those. We cited some people in the court. And, you know, we continue to document those and move those forward into the judicial system.
Thank you, Chief. You're a little, little light there, but we heard you, I think we heard you fine. And it's, it's come to, I might add that we all know that the city of Durango was early mandatory mask ordinance, well, that we passed the mandatory mask ordinance in the state of Colorado, and the governor actually passed the mandatory mask ordinance. And, but once the governor did that, we let our, our own city of Durango mask ordinance lapse because obviously it was superseded by the statewide mask ordinance. And so as we look forward to some of these higher levels of noncompliance, that's, again, I think the Council, you know, in the coming week or two, should consider concepts where we do have a higher level of enforcement capability by, by city, whether it's PD or with business licensed folks or whatever mechanisms we have. It's clear that this is not going to go away. And we have had an incredible amount of compliance to date, but we have had some specific problematic areas. So this is something to think about as we move forward. Again, Chris?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up by saying, I agree, and I would ask that the city look into that next step, and I would like to discuss it at our next earliest opportunity relative to, to whether or not we do put back in a, our own, our own rule that we can enforce if we're, if we're not able to do something about what's happening in our community, given the compelling data that was just shared with us relative to the health of the community and trying to keep this under control. I would really like to have that conversation. And I have one other question for Leanne, if I can, relative to that. Leanne, can you comment on the speeding, speed of tests? I had to take a test out of the state recently for a meeting, and I got my results back in an hour. And, and then Christina had to take one last week because she was in, in, in contact with an employee that had tested positive, and she still doesn't have her test back. And I was just curious. I know that's, that's a big piece and wondering how that's going.
Yeah, we, San Juan Basin Public Health has stood up community testing through the state lab, and the state lab in Colorado is not able to keep up with the volume of testing due to this most recent increase. So this is a, been an ongoing problem from the beginning of the pandemic, which is, as cases rise, the demand exceeds the capacity of the state lab. So with that, we have recently changed our community testing out of the state lab, which is receiving 23,000 tests a day now that we're at such a high rate across the state and can only process 7,000 a day. So what's happening is they're getting 23,000 samples in. The lab capacity is 7,000. I think for everyone that's been with me from the beginning, you remember that when we sat here in March, we said this capacity was 160 tests a day, right? So it's, it's a big victory to get from 160 to seven or eight thousand. It is not enough to contain COVID-19 as we go into winter months. So the state of Colorado is looking for send-out labs. Our tests were going to the Colorado State Lab and then getting sent out if they were lower priority tests. We have now solved that, and we are bypassing the state and going with our free testing directly to a send-out lab. So those results will come back faster, but what it doesn't do is if anyone was caught in that time period where they were receiving 23,000 a day and only processing 7,000, there's a backlog of negative test results. We've worked really hard to make sure all of the positive results got out. There's another, there were some other cracks in the state system where there were other labs that had broken positives. We've built redundancy into all of our local systems, so I'm not going to talk about that. But there are people in our community that are still waiting for negative results because they got tested prior to this switch. This is probably way too much information, except to let you know that as we increase volume and increase demand, things continue to break. We expect PPE to break again. We expect specimen collection to break again. We expect, we expect reagents to, you know, run the tests, the PCR tests to break again. So we are trying to build redundancies into every system so that we can send out lab, two labs all over the country from our local community. Now, when you talk about getting results in an hour, that's a point-of-care, either a point-of-care PCR or a point-of-care antigen test. We are also working right now to bring, we have six antigen tests on order from the state of Colorado, that if we are able to get those here, we can start getting tests back to people in 15 minutes to an hour. I, I feel, maybe I shouldn't have said this at a public meeting because everything that you have on order with the state as cases are rising, and you have to remember, we're a low-priority community because we've been able to contain disease more successfully than other communities. So while we just continue to put in our orders and try to bring more resources here, we're never the first community that's resourced because we've contained disease successfully and because we have 100% case investigations. So I am working as hard as I can to get 15-minute to one-hour tests. We are hoping to have news to share on that soon. We are not, that period is not on the end of the sentence yet.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Excellent. Councilor Baxter, and then Councilor Nozworthy, thank you.
Thank you, Dean. I just wanted to say that I also think we should have the conversation about what can we do to increase our compliance rates? But the other side of that is how do we enforce? And one of our biggest challenges when we did have the mask order was even then we didn't have clear steps to do enforcement. So I think before we have that conversation, we need to have some steps we can do to actually enforce. So when we pass an ordinance or we make some changes, we have some teeth in it.
Clearly, that's where we found ourselves today, I think, and that's exactly, exactly right for the community to know. Councilor Nozworthy?
Thank you. First of all, Leanne, a huge thanks to you and your team. You've been at this since January, when the rest of us weren't even thinking about some disease that might hit us. So I appreciate that, and I know you, you guys are working round the clock to keep us safe. I do believe that what you presented was both compelling, but also extremely sobering. And so you did provide us with options, what we can do to keep our community safe. And again, it's just reinforcing those measures. And like the other two councilors, I too support an effort to look at what we can do to increase compliance and what can we do to enforce any ordinances we have. I think that looking at your graphs makes it look like what we're heading into right now is much worse than any of the other spikes or waves that we've encountered. So I hope the whole community sees the seriousness of this, and together we can work to address this and not overload our hospital system. Thank you so much to you and your team.
Thank you.
Councilor Youssef?
Thanks, Mayor Burke. Leanne, thank you so much for your efforts and for the efforts of your team. I have two questions that I'd like to ask you, please. If you could let us know, number one, you mentioned that there are penalties for businesses that are not complying. Can you let us know what those penalties are? And then number two, can you discuss, at what point do we move to a stricter level of, of, you know, safer-at-home? And, and, and when, what is the trigger for that?
I'm going to start with that one, and then I'll go back to the compliance. So we are safer level three, which is the one step away from a stay-at-home order, is when you have 175 cases per 100,000 residents over a 14-day period. So when your case rate is 175 per 100,000 residents over a 14-day period. As of today, La Plata County just hit our absolute highest number. We're at 164 cases per 100,000 residents per 14 days. So when you hit 175, you then, there, there's a process of consulting with the state health department about how the community is going to move into the next stage of mitigation. There are not significant differences between level one and level two. There are significant differences between level two and level three in the capacity of businesses. You know, how many people are allowed to be in restaurants? How many people are allowed to be in retail establishments? How many people are allowed to worship together? That sort of thing. So we, we are not at 175. We are not looking at this stay-at-home level-three restrictions yet. But we also have to be honest that it is a real possibility. We are seeing every populous county in the state headed into level three. And I, I do want to say, you know, I, I want to like really sort of balance the, here's where it's headed, and we are at an inflection point where we can do things as a community to avoid landing in the same places as everybody else, right? We are the only community across the state that has successfully had a college open. We successfully have K through 12. Most, half of Coloradoan kids do not have an in-person learning option right now. We had incredibly high occupancy rates through the fall in our lodging. We had high sales tax returns. We have an airport that's operating at twice the national average, right? Right? So we have done this before. We have been, as a community, in a very tenuous position, and we have hunkered down on our, you know, or doubled down on our mitigation strategies, and we have, we, we've been successful. So if we do nothing, we will be looking at safer-at-home level three very, very soon in the next couple of weeks. If we take this opportunity right now to say, let's change our behavior as a community, and this is why we had this press conference on Friday, and this is why we wanted it to be, you know, about the schools, right? We, we, I mean, you can't keep your economy working if no one has in-person learning, but schools are also not just, obviously not economic drivers. They're all, you know, we owe our children education, social, emotional learning, academic learning, you know, physical, the, the physical care that we provide for them in schools, all of that. So this is, this is the point that we're at. But we're at 164 right now. 175 is when you have to start looking at your next action steps. The other question I think you had was around penalties for businesses. So the executive order, it's the mask order, the amended executive order, EO 2020-138, the business penalty it talks about is business license or liquor license. Those are the two things that are described in the executive order as the enforcement path forward as laid out in the executive order.
Thank you. I just want to, I appreciate that, all that clarification. And I just want to say that I think that one of the things that we've been successful at as a community is working together with the city and the county and San Juan Basin Public Health. It is definitely the most powerful way to move forward, and I hope that we can continue to do that as we look at further levels of enforcement and/or discuss that together in the coming weeks if needed.
Thank you. Thank you. And Councilor Baxter, you have another comment?
Yes. And I also want to say thank you, Leanne. You guys have been very communicative, and I really appreciate that. The question that Councilor Youssef asked about business licenses or enforcement, how do, how do we make that happen? At the city level, we decide that we want to do some enforcement. Who do we have to go to? Who does the enforcement? How do we make that happen?
So is that question directed at me or is that directed to your staffing?
I'm sorry, it was directed to you because right now we don't have, I, I believe right now the enforcement capability is at the county and state level and not at the city level?
It's, it's shared, it's shared across governments, and the executive order lists business licenses and liquor licenses as a pathway forward. So it is a shared responsibility. That is what's listed in the executive order. We recognize that it will take collaborative action as a community to succeed in enforcement. We also recognize that enforcement of face covering orders will be an important part of containing disease. So we are ready and available to work collaboratively to come up with what the enforcement pathways. But it is a whole of government response in the same way, and we, we've been really working on And we, we've been really working on, you know, sort of the reason we started with the firefighter analogy is that our staff right now is putting water on the fire and building the fire line. We want to work with the whole of government and the whole of community. It's no different than in the four sixteen fire when the city of Durango said, we stand ready to close our trails right now. Because we can't afford to have any more, you know, um, uh, wildfire in this community, right? And so it's the same type of whole of government, uh, next step, and we can work out what that would look like.
So I guess what I, I maybe I didn't make myself clear, probably. What I'm asking is what's the process? If, if, if a business, um, is or any entity is, is not obeying the mask orders or the mitigation efforts. What is the process to do enforcement that could remove a business license? Or how do we make that happen? What are the steps to make that happen? And who does it?
Uh, we do not issue business licenses. San Juan Basin Public Health does not. So I, I, I would not, I, I don't have the steps as to how that would happen.
Okay, maybe, um, Chief Brammer could help with that question?
I think, uh, I'll go ahead, Jose. I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, um, I think when we kind of look at that portion, uh, we kind of work in consultation with the, the city attorney and and where, uh, the interpretation of what he believes the, the enforcement avenues that we have. I think kind of looking at on this portion is if the city would like to have the, the enforcement, which it seems that they will, which it seems that I'm hearing from the council members that they would like, uh, that we need to go to the route of creating our order. Let me try that one more time. Creating our own ordinance or redoing our ordinance that we had, uh, lapse and look at placing some key enforcement mechanisms within there to, to make that happen. But I'll pass it on for Dirk to, uh, to have any other, uh, items that he may wanna place into that comment.
Yeah, just to be clear, the prior mask order was, was not really an ordinance. It was an order that was issued under the emergency authority. So, um, we're looking at business licenses. Our business license provisions are primarily administrative to assure that they collect sales tax and that sort of thing. So, you know, if we're gonna start enforcing, um, revocation of business licenses, then it very well may, uh, be that we need to make some amendments to our ordinances in that regard, clarify a path forward. There's two process requirements. We'll have to have hearings. And, uh, it, it won't be a quick path, but I, uh, I'm hearing what you said as well as what Jose said. So, you know, I think Steph, we can collaborate and, uh, bring some suggestions back to you as soon as possible to move forward in a way that allows us to take some action.
Thank you, Dirk. Uh, yeah, I think, I think, uh, this is not gonna go away. This is gonna be a long haul. And we've, uh, I'm looking forward to the day when, uh, we can separate the politics from the medical aspects of this, uh, uh, transmission of COVID. Uh, which will perhaps be tomorrow, who knows? After the election, you know, at least get, uh, less noise and signage and so forth to go, goes with it. So then we, then we really have to buckle down and, uh, and, uh, acknowledge that we do have, uh, some, some non-compliance in our community that we need to effectively be able to deal with, uh, moving forward. So, uh, I think that's, uh, totally appropriate and I think, looking forward to that conversation. As has been expressed by, I believe, all of us unanimously now. And so, uh, we don't wanna, this is not meant to be an additional burden on the, on the PD. They've got enough things on their plate. You know, I think, uh, simple administrative action of some sort is the best and appropriate, uh, hammer that the city of Durango might have to, uh, to, uh, deal with, uh, non-compliant businesses. So, thanks, thanks so much, Leanne. Uh, thank, thank you again. Leanne's our own, uh, very own Dr. Fauci in Durango, Colorado. Uh, I've had the, the, I don't, it's an honor, but it's the benefit of having a bit of an overview, working with the governor's COVID committee. We are so lucky to have San Juan Basin Health Department. I mean, you go from processing sewer and water permits to, uh, having to deal with a pandemic in your community. And, uh, they've really, really, uh, you, you can imagine in your own business model, trying to deal with something as impactful, uh, and be the point person for, uh, both the, uh, dissemination of information, understanding what's going on and, uh, issue these, uh, all these ordinances throughout your community. And follow up with contact tracing and so forth. It's, it's an incredible job that, that all of their staff is doing out there right now. So thanks so much and, uh, I guess we better have to move on. But this is probably the most important part of, uh, one of the most important segments of a meeting we've had, uh, since, uh, since April. So thank you and we look forward to, um, helping ask about getting increasing our transmission reduction above sixty-five percent, I guess is the goal, simply enough. But, uh, let's just stay healthy, everybody. It's easy. It's, I said, and the, the other day, it's, it's, it's not rocket science, it's just simple science. Just let's, just good behavior is all it takes. And Barbara Nozworthy, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, um, thank you, Mayor. You know, I, I visited a, a couple of places this summer where they really had a culture, an expectation of compliance. And there were things I saw, like, these are the six, the five steps you could do to help us contain COVID. And they were plastered up in, in, uh, public spaces and, you know, on different billboards and things. And I was wondering, in addition to enforcement, what measures we should think about that we can take to really uh, strengthen that culture, cultural expectation that people will help protect one another? I'd like to look at a, some positive sides in addition to any enforcement.
I agree. And, uh, yeah, what, you know, I don't know that we can have that discussion right now. But, um, you know, we talked about that a little bit in our, in our meeting with the community, um, with the CDC the other day, CRC the other day. And, uh, that's, um, I'm anxious to implement a few of the graphics and just, uh, culture building around that. Around the, because as, as we said before, it's not going away soon. So, uh, we need to make some investment to make sure we don't all have COVID fatigue. And this is, remains top of mind and, and, uh, in our community, because we, we have done a really good job. And, um, but at this point, we're, we're far in excess of what our neighbors to the, to the east, Archuleta County is doing. Has had a much better, uh, or less incidence rate. But, uh, but they don't entertain the, uh, the tourists and the amount of out-of-town visitors that we have that sustain our economy. So, um, if we're gonna have the economy, we have to do some good behavior and implement some strategy and a culture, as Barbara said. So, um, let's look forward to doing that. And, uh, with that, I think we'll let Leanne, uh, get some sleep and, uh.
Thank you. We appreciate all of you. Thank you so much for all of the work that the city of Durango has done, each and every one of you. The support and the work that everyone that lives in Durango and our surrounding communities has done to keep each other safe. We have every ingredient to be successful, and I'm looking forward to getting through this with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Leanne. Take care. Thanks for joining us.
And I'll be back anytime to, uh, if cases continue to go up. I will be happy to come back.
We'll, we'll take you up on that, most definitely. And, uh, the public would, uh, enjoy that as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move on to, uh, review of the consent agenda. The consent agenda is intended to allow city council by a single motion to approve matters that are considered to be routine or non-controversial. A separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests an item be removed from consent agenda and considered separately. Items removed from the consent agenda will be considered under agenda item six point, uh, two. So, uh, actually, um, yeah, so excellent, no, that would be, um, after, well, six point six. So, uh, at any rate, uh, I might ask for a reading of the consent agenda. And then we'll, uh, see if any councilors would like to remove any particular item.
Items six point one and six point two are approval of minutes. Item six point one is approval of the minutes from the city council's special meeting on October twentieth, two thousand and twenty. Six point two is approval of city council minutes from the regular council meeting on October twentieth, two thousand and twenty. Items six point three through six point five are requests for public hearings. Six point three is a request for a public hearing regarding the sixteen Coalbank Drive preliminary minor subdivision with a hearing to be held on November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty. Item six point four is a request for a public hearing regarding the Riverview Heights Lot Three dash A Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment and Rezoning Parcel Number five six six five two zero four zero nine zero three two. Again, to be held on November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty. Item six point five is a request for a public hearing regarding the Boxcar Landing Conceptual Development Plan Thirty-eight oh one Main Street, again, to be held on November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty.
Thank you, Fay. Uh, is there any councilors would like to remove a consent agenda item this evening? Seeing none, uh, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilor Vichy?
Yes.
Mayor Projan Baxter?
Yes.
Councilor Nozworthy?
Yes.
Councilor Youssef?
Yes.
And Mayor Burke?
Yes, thank you so much. And with that, we'll move on to the public hearings. We have no legislative or policy-related hearings this evening. So nine point two is a quadra judicial hearing, uh, which is a public hearing for the Valhalla Comprehensive Plan Amendment. May we have a staff report, please? Uh, Vicky, you're on mute. Uh, just one of those old technical things?
Thank you. Sorry about that. Um, thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm gonna share my screen here. So as you mentioned, this is the Valhalla Investments LLC Comprehensive Plan Amendment Proposal. And also a proposal for amendments at, for the La Posta Road Area Plan. Um, the property is located down off of La Posta Road in the La Posta Road Area Plan area. This is the bridge, to give you an idea of the location, going over the Animus River. And then down here is the road that goes up to Animus Air Park. So it's kind of in the north part of the La Posta Road area. The property is ten point six acres. It's located on the Animus River off of Moose Lane. Um, the properties, it's surrounded by single-family residential property across the river, down off of Tressalane. It has, um, contractors, shops and yards and an excavation company to the south and southeast. And then it has, um, additional warehousing to the west. This is also a property owned by Ted Hermisman, who is, who owns both properties now, or his, his, uh, families own the properties. And then the property to the north is vacant. Um, the ten point eight acre parcel has a single-family home down in this location, and they have a mobile home up at that location. So currently, this property is all shown as multiple use on the La Posta Road Area Plan. Um, multiply, there's three properties here. Uh, I'll talk about what multiple uses in a minute. And then it's surrounded by mixed commercial, light industrial, all of this, um, light pink. And then across the river, that, that's all residential, rural. Those are one to three acre lots. The proposal is to take this parcel, and there's a conceptual road alignment, which isn't shown on this map. But the current road or a future road is right on the property line between these two parcels, between their, their original parcel that Hermisman's owned and then the new parcel that they've acquired. And what they wanna do is move that road alignment to the east over here. And then use that as a divider between two different land use designations. The first thing they wanna do is increase the amount of mixed commercial, light industrial they have, so they can tie it back to the property that they have to the west. And then on the other side of the road, they wanna convert that to residential medium density for, to allow for a future, um, residential development. So just to explain the categories a little bit, multiple use allows a mix of residential and commercial developments. It can also be a single-use development. It does allow a density up to twenty-four units to the acre. And it is really sort of light commercial uses, um, more along the lines of office and retail, um, service businesses. It doesn't allow outdoor storage, display or operations. Mixed commercial, light industrial is more of a business park, um, light industrial parks. It does allow outward, outside storage, display and operations. And then residential medium density is, allows for multi-family, but the density's half of what it is under multiple use. And it allows between five and twelve units to the acre. So the process that we've gone through, there was a neighborhood compatibility meeting July fifteenth. Um, we did have several of the, um, residents in the area that brought up some issues and concerns that they had. I think a number of them are on this meeting, and so they'll probably, um, be talking to you in a little bit. But some of the biggest issues were really what's gonna happen to the property in the future. And we don't know that at this time. Um, we don't have a development proposal, and there hasn't been one discussed. But, but there are rules and regulations that any future development will have to abide by, including buffering standards, lighting standards, noise standards. So all those sort of, um, topics came up during the compatibility meeting. There was also a question about the intersection, which I'll talk about in, in another slide. The, the prog, the project did go before the jointly seeded planning commissions. That means it's both full planning commissions, the city and the county, because this is in joint planning area. Um, and they both together decide comprehensive plan amendments. Um, it did, was approved by all ten members on, on the planning commissions, the two planning commissions on October, on August twentieth, two thousand and twenty. So the question that I was just talking about, the alignment, um, there, there was a question at the neighborhood meeting, it's just, was this a safe alignment for this road? And we had both engineers, both city and county engineers, take a look at it. And they both felt that this location for this road was fine and was acceptable under both sets of codes. Um, this kind of shows the old alignment that was splitting these two par, property lines. And this is something that was very common, that when we plan a future road, we do put it on property lines. And a lot of that has to do with just allowing two different properties to have access off that road, which is important. Also, it shares the cost of donating the land, um, for the road, typically it's donated. And then of building the road if they redevelop. So it's usually a shared concept. Now that both properties are owned by the same person, moving it over makes sense. Um, another thing that the applicant pointed out to us is that this property has been filled. And so there, there's a pretty good grade difference between the existing buildings and the property to the east. So there's also a practical reason to move the, the road alignment over. Also, want to point out that this is a conceptual road alignment. We're not, this isn't set in stone. Um, this is alignment that was approved by the planning commissions. It sort of straightened it out that the city engineer requested. Again, it is conceptual, it can be moved. But until we do the engineering or until someone does the engineering on that road, we don't know exactly where it's gonna go and how it fits. And obviously, it'll have to meet all of, all the standards. So there's, um, a number of, um, there's several comprehensive plan policies I just wanna point out. Um, first, the future land use map does provide the guidance on all the land use decisions, um, in the areas. And then also achieving neighborhood stability is a really important objective of our comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan, um, future land use map does have to, to be amended. It does need to make findings that are consistent with this comprehensive plan policy. These are also code language, so I'll go through those when I get to the criteria section. And then the La Posta Road also talks about achieving a sustainable mix of land uses by using the future land use map as a guide. And then it also points out that, in addition to the future land use map, you use it in conjunction with all the goals, objectives and policies of the plan to, for all development decisions. So there are five criteria for comprehensive plan amendments. The first is, is proposed map amendment compatible with existing or planned land uses. So again, the property is, is the multiple use, um, in, shown in the dark pur, in dark, uh, pink. And then all of the property around it is mixed commercial, light industrial on this side, and then the residential on the other side. So we do believe it is compatible by taking this property and having the west portion go to this mixed commercial, light industrial. And then the east portion having a residential, um, designation that kind of buffers the residential that's farther east. And also kind of a transition between those two uses and keeping the industrial uses off the river. Um, the second requirement, or the second, um, criteria is asked about public facilities and, and services in the area. This area is served by city water. This is a city water main at the southern end down, down Moose Lane. So any development of the property will be required to take city water, use, utilize city water, and it will develop to city standards. There isn't sewer in the area. We are doing some studies on where sewer should go. We just completed a study. But sewer isn't something that's going to happen probably for a while, and that was another one of the applicant's discussion items was that he owns this property. He can't do the residential development until sewer is available in the area. And this will give him the opportunity to build a portion of his property with mixed commercial, light, industrial, which can use septic systems. The third criteria talks about warranted from changing conditions in the area. We do believe that Moose Lane is developed pretty intensely and for industrial uses, probably more so than was thought about when this was originally given land use characteristics. And this property really doesn't have a really good use to be mixed use, which is pretty similar to what a multiple use designation does. And that the commercial along this corridor is probably just not going to happen. Residential along the rivers is still pretty desirable. And so that's really what they're kind of coming back in with as a part of this process. We do believe that there are changing conditions. And then, does the map meet a currently unaddressed need? Increasing the amount of mixed commercial, light, industrial in the La Posta Road area is generally supported by the overall vision of the area plan, that this is where we want to put light, industrial and mixed commercial development. And then also changing the designation to the residential medium density drops the density down from what it is currently in the multiple use. And it also reinforces the plan's vision to have the lower intensity uses along the river, and it helps support the residential uses across the river. And then finally, if the map amendment is approved, will there be an adequate supply of land permitted in the category being changed? This is a little complicated. The multiple use category actually was eliminated from the city's comprehensive plan in two thousand seventeen. But we haven't changed the La Posta Road area plan. So we are in the process of working on the update on the La Posta Road area plan. And our plan would be to change this category anyway, because we no longer have it in the city's comprehensive plan. Typically, in the city, we changed it to a mixed use designation. Again, we don't believe this is a mixed use sort of area at this location. So we'll be back in talking to the other neighbors about potential changes as we finalize the La Posta Road area plan. So obviously, it's not a category we're trying to protect. So in summary, the proposed changes is to move the road. And this is the road alignment that is the condition of approval from the planning commission. That was the only condition that was attached to the motion, was to adopt this plan, and the applicant supported it. And then also then to change the west side to fixed commercial, light, industrial, the east side to residential medium density. There is no budget or fiscal impact associated with this request. As applicability to the comp plan, the change is compatible with other properties in the area and the goals and policies of the La Posta Road area plan, as well as the city's comprehensive plan. And it is a recommendation of the planning commission that the city council by motion approved the Valhalla Plan Amendment to the La Posta Road area plan, as well as the city's comprehensive plans, future land use map, subject to the findings and conditions reflected in the planning commission's staff report and minutes of August twentieth, twenty twenty. Questions?
Thank you, Vicki. Any immediate questions from council to staff before we open the public hearing? And if we can.
Stop sharing?
Yeah, I think so. I think we're ready. Everybody's back. Thank you so much. And if there's no questions immediately from staff, I'll open the public hearing. And we'll hear now public comments on the specific agenda item. To keep the meeting moving along, we are limiting comments to three minutes. You will be muted once you reach that limit, even if you're in the middle of a sentence, but we try not to be that harsh. Please use the raise hand function if you're using the Zoom app to indicate that you would like to provide a comment. If you're calling into the meeting using your telephone, press star nine to raise your hand. Our moderator will announce the next person to speak, and we'll unmute you at that time. With that, Mitchell, do we have anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this issue?
We do have some attendees in our audience, but no one has raised their hand yet. If you're here to speak to this agenda item, now is the time. Please use the raise hand function. We do have someone here.
Excellent.
B. Kimmel, please unmute yourself. Give us your first and last name and your address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Good evening. Counselors Brian Kimmel, Southwest Land Services, representing the Hermison's of this particular project. You want to address? Ten ninety-nine Main Avenue, Durango. I think Vicki did a great job of summarizing everything, and I think Ted Hermison is also on here if he wants to say anything else. I don't know that we could add anything. It's fairly simple. We have heard from residents across the river, and I think Vicki's explanation tonight of what this is as part of an overall process of any development over there is just a really, really preliminary change. And until you see a platton, that's what other things you won't know what kind of uses are going to go in over there for comment upon. So that's about it. I think it's pretty straightforward for us, and I hope it is for yourselves.
Thank you, Brian. Yeah, appreciate it. And knowing you're there, we might have some questions, and so hang in here with us. Any other folks in the audience?
Mayor, nobody else has raised their hand.
All right. If that's the case, I will close the public hearing.
Sorry, Mayor. Someone just did.
Excellent.
Jennifer, it is your turn to speak. Please give us your first and last name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Okay. My name is Jennifer Nelson. I'm at one fifty-eight Tressel Lane, across the river, kind of candy corner from the proposed rezoning. My concern is that several years ago, Reclametal tried to do the same thing, but with the whole parcel. When we went in front of the joint commission and then later in front of both the city and the county, they all agreed that that land over there should not be used for mixed, commercial, light, industrial, that it should remain in a mixed use or residential form, because our river corridor needed to maintain that for aesthetics as well as environmental purposes. They did not allow Reclametals to make the same type of change from the multiple use. Some of the concerns we have now is we realize that Mr. Hermison does have a business over there. But by moving that line so that the mixed, commercial, light, industrial comes closer to the river, it puts environmental issues into place. It also aesthetic wise causes problems. And we do have noise problems. I mean, when you live in a river corridor like this, anything that happens on either side of the river really impacts the other side of the river, because the echoes, the amount of noise. When we ask about buffering, trees, that kind of stuff, the response is, if this is allowed, none of that will be happening until the residential construction starts. And as Vicki said earlier, until that sewer is put in, there's not going to be any residential built over there. So we won't have the buffering. We won't have the trees. We don't have the noise reduction for anything he decides to do with the project if you allow this amendment. So it leaves us in a place that it could be ten, fifteen, twenty years down the road, but we don't have that protection of having that buffer there. And with the mixed, commercial, light, industrial, we have no idea what's going to go in over there. And once you allow this amendment, we really don't have control as long as it falls into the category. That's our concerns.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson. Yeah, thank you for those thoughts. And we've got some questions to ask the proponent regarding that in a few minutes. But any other folks for a public hearing this evening? Mitchell?
No one else has raised their hand, Mayor. If anyone in the attendee list is here to speak to this agenda item, please use the raise hand function now.
Hearing done. We will at this point close the public hearing. And councilors, if there's any questions of staff or the proponent at this point, let's have that discussion. And if we'd like to kind of go around in any particular order, just raise your hand, and we'll get started. Any questions? Chris, go ahead.
I think I saw some information in the documentation, but it might be helpful if Vicki responds to the one citizen's comments relative to the buffering and that process and how that really would go.
Thank you, Counselor Batine. That's what I wanted to clarify. Actually, the buffering requirements come with development. So when the property gets developed, then there are buffering requirements in La Posta Road area plan, as well as in the city's plans. So when the mixed, commercial, light, industrial portion of that property gets developed, they will have to do buffering along what would be that future road alignment. May have to put the road in, depends on what's going on in the area at the time of that development. But if they don't put the entire road in, then they'll at least have to do the buffering. They won't be planting trees in the residential area until there's a development proposal in the residential area. So that's correct. But the mixed, commercial area will have to buffer when it develops.
Thank you, Vicki. If there's no other questions, I've got one for Vicki. I too am sensitive to the entire river corridor, both sides of the river there. And there's some really sweet little places along the other side of the river. So we, but if I'm not mistaken, this whole thing is to designate a strip of housing along the river corridor that was not there previously. Is that a fair statement? That it wasn't designated as housing, and now it is, we do, by this measure, create a strip of housing along the river corridor?
So the existing designation is a mix, is multiple use, which could be housing or commercial. It doesn't have to be both. It could be either. And so, no, there wasn't any requirement for housing, but it did allow housing along that area. It was a much more intense housing. It was up to twenty four units to the acre potential for that housing. The new proposal does expand the mixed, commercial, light, industrial over to the east, but then it's lowering the density along the river down to a medium density housing, which is up to twelve units to the acre. So it's a lesser dense housing type along the river corridor. The difference between this and Reclam is that Reclam, well, first of all, Reclam didn't fit into the mixed, commercial, light, industrial category anyway. So that's another whole topic. It's an industrial use. But they wanted the entire parcel to be designated that, including all the way down to the river. So that wasn't something that staff supported, and it was something that was denied by the planning commission. So you guys never had to deal with it. But it is different. I mean, this is increasing the amount of use, but it's not the entire parcel. It's not the river, the top of the riverbank. It's not all the way down to the riverfront.
I find it particularly, you know, my sense is that this is a betterment by one designated that that is residential specifically in a lesser dense residential designation as well. But clearly protecting the river corridor. And my hope is that the multiple use that we are expanding some degree prevents it from going all the way to the river, which is what I see happening down there. We've never taken a stand that it's definitely a residential corridor that needs to be established there to, one, create residential corridor and a truly mixed use development or community down there. But also, you know, I don't see it as a huge detriment to expand the multiple use area over to that road. Noting also that that residential is an option to include in that multiple use designation, so that hopefully it could be some live work environments and start the trend of creating more housing along the La Posta Road corridor and prevent more heavy industrial uses like the Reclam and some of the other uses that have been proposed down there. I see this as a trend in the right direction, quite honestly. So I'm happy to see the residence, clearly residential designated area for the first time that we've actually designated this down in La Posta Road. Any other thoughts? I had one thought on the buffering, and just as Vicki mentioned, I mean, we can't really, this is just a comp plan amendment. This is not site-specific development plan resolution in which we would have the ability to make any development comply with any buffers and that kind of thing. And I would hope that, to Ms. Nelson's concern, that any of the multiple use development that would occur perhaps earlier than the residential would also have buffering as part of that site-specific development plan that would help eliminate some of the noise and issues, site and noise related to, that might impact the across-the-river neighbors there. And then, of course, followed up with the buffers when the housing occurs as well. But I think buffering is a key to making all those things mesh within a pretty tight confinement there. So, Melissa?
Thanks, Mayor. I would just add that I agree with you on a lot of the things you just said, Dean. I also heard from Mr. Kimmel that this is a preliminary change and that the buffers and things like that would be done, I believe, as they progress. So I hear that. I do think it's great to hear that some consideration is being done to get some higher density on the La Posta Road. So I believe this is a good step in the right direction. And I would ask of council, you know, we have these discussions often, and I know we have a strategic planning process coming underway starting in January, which I believe we'll likely talk about things like growth and development. But, you know, I just want us to always be thinking for developments such as this is if we can bring forth alternatives to encourage, promote and incentivize density and help towards, moving towards potential workforce housing or attainable and affordable housing if we're able to in situations such as this. So I just put that plug in, because here we have an opportunity. And it sure would be nice to see some of that happening as we have projects coming forward.
Thank you. I agree totally with that concept. And Kim, you had your.
Thank you, Dean. Having been on the planning commission, one of the things that I experienced was the general ideas and plan changes that didn't designate exactly what was going to go there. And it is kind of hard to sit there and go, oh, we're making changes, and we don't know what that change is going to look like. But I also came to the understanding and through the process of being on the commission that when the actual plans do come in front of us, all the details are there, and all the details are taken care of, and all the concerns are addressed in as best a manner as possible. So I would encourage people to be patient and to look forward to seeing what kind of plans come forward and working on getting the best thing possible. And I also have to say that I'm kind of excited about this in some way, because as we know, the Bodo Park area is not functioning as our light, industrial area very well anymore, and we need more space, and the area along La Posta Road is a good place for that, at least in my mind. So I appreciate that. And with that, I would like to make a motion to approve the amendment to La Posta Road Area District Plans Future Land Use Map, as well as the Comprehensive Plans Future Land Use Map, subject to the findings and conditions in the staff report of August twenty twenty. Is there anything else?
I heard a second from Chris. So it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? I just want to say too, while Vicki's here, you mentioned, one of the statements you made was that you would look at the other properties up and down the river for similar designation. So what I see happening here is a residential corridor, a band of residential specific development along the river. And then this mixed use or whatever it might morph into, but certainly a mix of potential residents and light industrial use or commercial use as the next band and then the most intensive uses up by the by the poster road itself. So I see a kind of a nice mix that this particular project is is setting the tone for all the way up and down the corridor, if I'm reading this right. So okay, well, I'll quit talking and call for call for a roll call.
Councilor Bateen?
Yes.
Mayor Perchon Baxter?
Yes.
Councilor Noseworthy?
Yes.
Councilor Yusuf?
Yes.
And Mayor Birkin?
Yes, thank you so much. So with that, we'll move on to 11.1, introduction of an ordinance amending Division One, Article Six of Chapter Two of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Drango to amend and create procedures regarding the receipt of complaints and other actions on violations related to municipal campaign finance matters and declaring an effective date. Perhaps we can have City Attorney Dirk Nelson fill us in on the details of this and anything we don't know already. Dirk, you're on mute.
I just found that out. Thank you. Yes, this is ordinance oh, 2020-15 when we get to that point. This has been in process for a while. Counsel was provided with a draft at the last meeting with an indication that it would be posted in comments sought. We did receive comments and your package shows that a number of changes were made to the draft ordinance in response to those comments. I'd be happy to answer any specific questions, but I believe that this, and again, this ordinance was is taking some time to put together. And, you know, we worked closely with the clerk's office to make sure that it is set up to allow the clerk to take complaints about violations municipal campaign finance that have been transferred to the clerk for receipt via some recent legislation that was approved by the Colorado Legislature. So again, I'd be happy to answer questions. If not, again, this is oh, 2020-15 and it's ready for approval on first reading.
Any further questions of the city attorney with regard to this? I think it's it's fair to say, Dirk, that this was largely driven by the state, the new legislation from the state that we're just codifying in our own municipal code and and with some minor tweaks for our own, as have been suggested with from within our community. With that, I'll call for a motion. If I entertain a motion on this. Don't be bashful. Oh, 2020-15, resolution oh, 2020-15.
2020-15. I make a motion to approve that ordinance.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. And again, that's oh, 2020-15. Maybe we have a roll call, please, Fay.
Councilor Noseworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Perchon Baxter?
Yes.
Councilor Bateen?
Yes.
Councilor Yusuf?
Yes.
And Mayor Birkin?
Yes. Thanks so much. And thanks for the public for letting us entertain ourselves a little bit. Some of these business items have been talked and talked and talked. And so when we get to actual action, sometimes we like to have a little fun with it. But the next item on our agenda is 11.2, an ordinance amending Chapter 27 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Drango. That's the Land Use and Development Code by amendment and action and in addition of portions of tables and sections of two dash three, excuse me, two dash one dash three dash three and two dash two dash three dash four of the code governing vacation rentals and declaring an effective date. So the salient feature in there was vacation rentals and Dirk, if you could tell summarize that for us.
Well, this.
Eric, I've got to bow out of this one first also since we're, since I was not part of this discussion last time.
Thank you, Chris. You just recusing yourself on this particular item.
Yes, sir.
Okay, let the record know. Thank you.
Yes, this would be ordinance oh, 2020-16. It was drafted following the hearing that council conducted at the last meeting considering changes to the land use code regarding vacation rental, the vacation rental program. Again, I'd be happy to answer questions or allow staff to answer questions if anyone has specific items that you would like some more information on.
Did you say this was oh, 2020-16?
Yes, 2020-16.
Thank you for that. And this again is an item we have substantial discussion on, but this is our time to ask anything further up Dirk or express any threat.
Go ahead and make a motion and then we can discuss further if we wish. I approve ordinance oh, 2020-15, amending Charter Chapter 27 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Drango by the amendment in addition of portions of tables and sections of two, one, three, three and two, two, three, four of the code governing vacation rentals and declaring an effective date.
I'll second that.
Thank you for that. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, call for a roll call, please.
Councilor Yusuf?
Yes.
Councilor Noseworthy?
Yes.
Mayor Perchon Baxter?
Yes.
And Mayor Birkin?
Yes, thank you very much. And I'm just gonna call Chris back to the meeting. There we go. Thank you, Chris. Magic. The benefits of a virtual meeting. Thank you so much. And with that, moves us into the administrative portion of our meeting, which is item 12.1. It's a 12.1.1, which is the city budget update with our new city manager, Jose Madrigal. Jose?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just wanted to give an update on our budget, budget preparation processes we're going through. We will have a budget retreat on November 5th, so this Thursday from one to six, where I will be going over with the city council, our proposed budget. The proposed budget is posted on our website as we speak. If you go to the finance department page, our budget is there. So if anybody would like to take a look at it on that proposed side or the draft of it, please do so. And looking forward to meeting with you all on Thursday and going over with the budget in more detail. Thank you.
Excellent. Very concise. That's a fraction of what it takes to listen about the budget, but thanks for that update, Jose. Looking forward to our six hours on Thursday. Melissa, you had a question.
Thanks, Dean. A quick question, Jose. Is it possible, if we have questions, that we might be able to reach out to Devon in advance and or yourself?
Yes, please do so. I know that the budget document is in a little bit of a different format. So if there's anything specific that you're looking for, please feel free to take a look into it. I know we have some minor modifications that are coming out with some of the pages as we go through the process and appreciate the council's patience and next year, definitely with the budget software that we'll have, it'll be way more seamless and we'll be going through pretty quickly.
Great, thanks. So okay for us to reach out to her then.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect. Barbara?
Yeah, you just went, yeah, you just mentioned the budget software we'll be going with. And I know people in the community were interested in what that would be. Can you just fill us in on the Open Gov, what we're going to be doing by next year?
Absolutely. And you kind of took a little bit away from Thursday, but that's okay. We'll give them a teaser. On Thursday, we will talk about it just a little bit, but we are moving with Open Gov a software that allows some transparency tools that we can place online. It's a software that I'm very familiar with and have received a lot of compliments in regards to the ability for citizens to be able to go onboard, go online and check the budget themselves, see where we're at monthly with our expenditures and our process. So it's really a great tool to open it up for citizens to know our budget process, not only at the very beginning as we go through, but how we're going through in our budgets. And it's going to take us a few months to get that up and running, but hopefully around, I think our target line is around April. We should have it up and going, but we'll keep moving forward with that portion, but we will be using Open Gov.
Great, thank you so much.
Excellent. Thank you, Jose, and thank you for that question. We'll move on to 12.2, which is a presentation by our assistant city manager, or I see Scott Shine, or Scott, are you going to hear? Oh, here's Kevin. Thank you so much. Our first item is an update on bump outs for business program. These are our bump outs on Main Avenue and how they're going to proceed into the future. So Kevin?
I'm sorry, you serve Scott here. Scott is going to talk about the program.
Okay, excellent.
Thanks for that intro, Kevin. Good evening, members of the council, Scott Shine, the planning manager for the City of Drango. From what I understand, this came up in last week's study session, and there were some questions about the bump out program. And so we responded, we put together the written agenda document for your review. And then I'm here tonight mainly to respond to questions if you have them, but I'd like to start by just recapping the experience we had this year with bump outs, what the next steps are, and then looking forward what we're planning on on doing for the future of the bump out program. We had a, we had an all staff meeting in community development today and wanted to give updates to all the staff in our department. And I and Kevin and I use the bump out program as a sort of a symbol of what we're trying to achieve as far as a mindset and a culture within the community development department and more broadly. If you'll remember, it was back in April and we were just getting used to and familiar with what COVID was going to do to our community. And through my participation and Alex Rugoff's participation in the Economic Recovery Task Force, we started realizing that we needed to create more outdoor space for businesses if they were going to operate at anything close to a viable level of function. And so we brainstormed different ideas and Kevin did a lot of great coordination among different departments in the city. And within a couple of weeks, we had Main Avenue restriped, which blew a lot of people's minds that we were able to react that quickly to be nimble and redirect resources to a priority. We got that done and that set the stage for the bump outs. A team of staff met and created the documents that we needed to license the bump outs to make sure we were covered as far as liability and managing the use of the bump outs. That team really was overseen by Dirk Nelson, making sure we were all right from a legal perspective. And we got all those documents together again within a few days. We launched the program in partnership with Tim Walsworth. He did a lot of surveying and feedback with the businesses and then our special events staff, Alex, myself, the streets crews, city engineering, we're all involved in implementing the program. And so really was organization wide effort. It was quick. It was it was, we were aware of a little bit of risk that we were taking and opening up this new opportunity for businesses, but we felt like the risk was was manageable, given the the conditions we were in. We had a few learning experiences and, you know, thankfully, we didn't have anything very dire as far as vehicle and patron interactions. But we we tried to, and immediately after the most significant event, a group of us met and reflected on what happened and tried to learn from that experience. So I just want to provide that as a basis for you, counsel, the sort of the backstory that you you see a little bit of, but it really was a great collaborative effort. And then you saw in the agenda doc the feedback that we've been getting from local business owners that it really was crucial in making this summer. I don't want to say successful, but we softened the blow as much as we could and accommodated uses that wouldn't have been there otherwise. So like I said, with with a sort of a year behind us now or a season behind us of experience, we've identified five top issues that we need to work on in the off season. We're going to work on achieving better ADA accessibility into and out of the bump outs. We're going to ensure adequate clear area on the sidewalks throughout the main app corridor for safe distancing. We want to improve the safety of the interface between the seating areas and the travel lanes. We're going to provide improved aesthetic standards and guidance for the bump outs to better fit the quality of downtown. And we want to establish protocol for ongoing enforcement of the bump out program standards to make sure as these things get installed and change over time, we're still achieving compliance with the standards that are adopted. So those are the top five things we're talking about. Our staff group is already met once. We plan to meet a number of other times, like I said, during this off season to prepare for spring 2021. As you might have seen, those, I know a lot of you are downtown regularly. Over the weekend, a lot of the furnishings in the bump outs started to come out. The bigger structures have been taken down. And tomorrow morning, special events staff and business development staff will be removing the parade barricades and the streets crews will be coming in and taking out the large orange jersey barriers. So by the end of the day tomorrow, we should have almost everything removed there. We had some talk of trying to extend the the season of the bump outs, but due to a number of factors, it just wasn't possible this year. We felt like it was best to stick with the original terms of the agreement, get everything out of there. And then, like I said, evaluate and implement better in the spring. We think it could be reinitiated as early as April of next year, you know, pending weather and some other things, but that would be our target is to update the program, address all those things that I listed and then be ready to launch again in the spring. So that's the bistro table recap. The other thing we're realizing, and I think Council Noseworthy said it, it's a bit sobering right now about what the trajectory of cases and things. So we're trying to think of in the winter season, what are things that we can do, even if, even though it's not full use of a parking space like the, like the bump out program? What can we do to enable some more outdoor space or some safer spaces for business operations to support them? During what we're hearing is it is kind of a very tenuous time for a lot of our local businesses and a lot of them are nervous about going into winter. So we're trying to be responsive to that. I'll just list a couple of things we're doing and then I'll be happy to take questions. We're going to allow bistro table permits. Those are the sort of little sidewalk, two top tables that we allow. Those can be maintained throughout the winter as long as those comply with the terms of their permit, such as ADA clearance, such as maintenance of the sidewalk, keeping it clear of snow and ice. So that's a sort of a scaled back outdoor seating option for some of the restaurants. We've worked very closely with the parking division to continue to take out short term takeout spaces. And so we have 14 restaurants that are taking advantage of that program. That's where one or two spaces are, the meters are bagged, people can pull in quickly and get takeout from restaurants. We've heard that a lot of restaurants are investing in takeout ordering systems and we think this, you know, helps address the new operational challenges they're facing. We're also on a case by case basis reviewing requests for right away encroachment permits. Just one example to understand what that looks like. Maria's bookshop is thinking about parking a book truck in front of their business in order to enable patrons to do pickups, to have a little gift wrapping station there. They want to just do that for the holidays. They would park it there during the day, they'd pay the meter revenue and then at night they would move it out. And so we feel like that's a reasonable request, again, trying to help them operate in a safer way. So as those things come up, we'll be able to use our encroachment permits for those types of purposes. We've gotten some requests and the biggest one was for Noel night, thinking about providing more outdoor space. And there's the possibility, again, pending approval from San Juan Basin Public Health to close portions of Main to close portions of Main Avenue so that any crowds can be more dispersed. They're not just all jammed onto the sidewalks. So we've had some initial conversations with streets, special events in our office about potentially supporting that. And the last item that's still in effect, we did pass an emergency order back in, I believe it was end of April, early May, which allowed all businesses, not just downtown businesses, to convert some of their onsite parking to either outdoor seating or display space or pickup space, and they can do that without any additional review or approval from our office. This seems to have helped those businesses that do have parking lots on their site, which is primarily outside of the downtown core. Again, to create different options for their patrons, make them feel safer transacting business with them. So that continues, that's in effect. And we haven't really experienced any negative consequences or complaints about that program. We are looking at other ideas. We think, like I said, going into winter and the bump outs were a big signal from from the city saying, you know, we we want to be flexible, we want to accommodate, you know, new ways of doing business, given the occupancy restrictions that are in place. We're talking about other ways to do that, thinking about how we can allow businesses to take advantage of underutilized spaces like rooftops, like parking spaces and do that in a way that you know, it's sort of a soft thing, but gives them hope, gives them a thing that they can invest in. In the meantime, they're not just sitting there twiddling their thumbs, waiting for the uncertainty to pass, but maybe it gives them a path to make some improvements, add some space to accommodate the the new realities we're living in. So that's the bump out program and some other things we're doing to facilitate business operations and expansion. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Scott. Yeah, one of the other major successes, I think, in the program was to the restriping of Maine, which is now a permanent experiment, if you will, with one lane each direction with the the center lane being the turn lane and delivery lane. So I think I, my sense is that's working really, really well and one step towards a reduction of of traffic, you know, we, I think it's certainly there's no, there's sufficient throughput on Main Avenue. And I think the merchants seem to be happy with the the parking on the side streets largely and and just driving down Main with with limited parking and one lane each direction, I think, is is a something I've been looking forward to in forty years in Durango. So thanks for making, thanks for the pandemic to bring us to this experimental solution. So hopefully we can maintain that. You know, was that you talked about some of the challenges in, I'm not disputing the the decision to shut down bump outs, but I I can envision snow plow plowing and some of the internal controls that the city has to deal with. Just needed to be, cause the bump outs to be dismantled for a short period of time so we can rethink it one and also do some maintenance on the streets during this off season. So the primary impetus for for shutting down?
Yeah, that's right, Mayor. I think maintenance, there's just a lot of uncertainty. You know, after this just incident we had with the vehicle accident, everybody sort of stepped back and say, okay, we've gotten through the summer and the fall with no real major crises. Let's take a pause, let's look at. And one of the things I failed to mention is we got a grant from C dot, which will enable us to buy some stronger barriers on the sort of the upstream side of the bump outs to make that potential a lot less that a vehicle could go in there. So we said, let's take a pause, let's get the things out of there, let's buy these extra supplies and get ready to launch again in spring. Because we did have such a successful, you know, summer and fall, we felt like that was the best way to go. The business owners have been great. They all understood the challenges with keeping them over the winter and with these other things that we're doing and and trying to accommodate. They were all really understanding about clearing things out.
Perfect. Thank you, Scott. Appreciate it. Barbara?
Thank you. First of all, a huge congratulations to everyone and their team. I thought they were a wonderful solution and actually addition to the vibrancy of our community. So I'd like to see them continuing on on your third item that you're going to look at, improving the safety of the interface between seating areas and traffic lanes. Does that include consideration of reducing the speed limit? You know, I know we tried it with the special event sign this year, but would you be looking at for the time period during that the bump outs are in place? That we would have a, we would impose a reduction in the speed limit? That's one question. I have one more.
Yeah, I think that's a definite possibility. Part of the C dot grant is some additional signage. And, you know, traffic engineers get very weird about reducing changing speeds, but we did that with the special event signage. I think we would do that in a more prominent way to make, you know, drivers alert that that this is different. There's more activity in the roadway. And so at at some level, I don't, I can't commit to a permanent reduction, but signage and at least temporary reductions in speeds would be in effect.
And then my my other is maybe more of a comment rather than a question, which is I appreciate you looking at maybe in April, going back to the bump outs, but I also recognize that we're going into a difficult time when if we don't reduce the transmission in our community, we may be looking at even more restrictions, which I don't want us to go to if we don't have to. But I'd also like to encourage you to be able to be as nimble and creative as you were in the past to possibly address the needs of the businesses to have more outdoor capacity even during the winter as we go into these economic difficulties.
Kim, Kim, you had a comment?
Thank you, Dean. I too agree with Dean's comment about the restriping of the of the downtown of Main Street. And part of it is because without the bump outs there in the wintertime, it actually provides for more bicycle traffic safety. So I I ride my bike down there all the time and I I really, really like it. So I appreciate that. I also like your concept of possibly closing some blocks of Main Avenue to traffic in order to, like you mentioned for Noel Night, in order to allow public to spread out a little bit more so that they're not so close together. And I think there might be significant applications of that even post post COVID, if if we can say that. So as with the bump out program too, being post COVID. I think the speed limit notifications, I think the speed limit, event speed limit change was great, but I'm not certain that there were enough notifications. When you come into on the main from from the north end, it was like two blocks before there were any bump outs. And I think by the time people got to the bump outs, they may have forgotten or not understood why there was that notification. So I would love to see more of that to make it safe. And finally, I absolutely adore that you say yes instead of we can't. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Kim. I I want to reinforce what Barbara said too about the nimbleness. I think, you know, given unpredictable nature of the winter season, if if we have an opportunity to open up earlier, great. If it if it's just the best winter ever and we got tons of snow, then we have an opportunity to kind of shut down and do snow sculptures in the middle of Main Avenue. Instead of, so there's a lot of opportunity there that I think we should be really open to whatever comes our way and and with the with the idea of creating additional vitality downtown that's outside and wonderful. So thanks for the good comments, everybody. Scott, are you gonna be around for just a few more minutes? Or I was gonna ask you to just to share with us the November tenth date regarding the urban renewal meeting that's upcoming. You know, normally I would do that in reports and actions, but if you if it's just a one liner, you can give us on the, you can get home to your kids.
Thank you. Thank you. No, Thursday, November twelfth at five PM is the next is the U R A neighborhood meeting for the Midtown Plan. Notices went out to all the property owners Thursday and Friday of last week, so they should be getting those. And then we're going to release the virtual walking tour, hopefully tomorrow for the property owners, but for the entire community to do a walk, virtual walking tour through Midtown. I can hang out through Nicole's update if there's other questions.
Okay, that's a, you know, that's a really important thing for all our business owners within that urban renewal district, the designated boundary. And it's a real opportunity for those property owners to really understand what the what benefits there might be and what opportunities are going to come about by being within that area and the impacts of that. And I I'm so sorry, I cut off Melissa had her hand up and did prior and you had a comment, but thank you, Scott.
Thanks, Mayor. I never know if I should like put my little finger up or what you're looking at. So I know it's a lot of people to look at at once. Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, say, re just reiterate a few things to one more, you know, again, commending staff for being nimble and moving fast in such an important time. This really showed a change in in staff, I I felt, and and I I just was so, so happy to see that quick action. I wanted to say I really appreciate the way you guys have laid out the goals. I I'm I I too agree that going forward next year, I would love to see better ADA access and improve the aesthetics and safety, of course, throughout this program. I do want to also support the special events. I think that's a great trial period for us to look at what it looks like when we close down Main just to see. So I I I support that. And I also like the new striping. I feel like it moves traffic down Main much more efficiently. I feel safer when I'm down Main these days. I want to let you know, I have spoken with our Economic Recovery Task Force as well. You know, I meet regularly with the restaurant and retail and personal service task force, and they had a lot of very positive things to say on the bump out program. They 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 had some, you know, a good input and and again, it's something I'd like to see us discuss as a council in the new year when we're talking about this or and and to put it on staff's mind, which is, you know, they were suggesting that if we can give restaurants, retail and personal services a definitive plan that that could keep the bump outs going into the future, then those businesses might be much more likely to make the investment and to participate for the long term. And so this year was very temporary in nature. If we had a plan and if we could communicate that we were going to make these changes into the future, I think that would may have have a big impact for them. And also, you know, I I want to reiterate that right now there are no bad ideas. And let's let's put everything on the table, consider everything and and keep moving forward. And then I was wondering if 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 we, you know, what kind of you mentioned extra supplies, Scott, that you're buying. I wanted to know what those extra supplies were. And it and and I know that there was information in the in the agenda doc about the bid grant for a hundred thousand dollars. But if there was any other funding opportunities that we could get to help with some of this infrastructure going forward? That's the question.
Yep, good question. Thank you. As far as the fifty thousand that the city received from C dot were hustling to that we have to get that dedicated by the end of the year and get those supplies. So we're trying to move quickly. It's for sharos to put on those new lanes. Those are surprisingly expensive, but Sarah Dodson or Sarah Hill is going to be buying those. She's also buying a few more bike parking corrals that can be interspersed throughout the bump outs. Some, there are some portable ADA ramps that we want to buy and then have those available to business owners to make sure the bump outs are accessible. And then the big ticket item is instead of those plastic orange jersey barriers, we want to get either concrete or steel barriers that are crash rated and potentially have some planting capabilities. So we're trying to beef up the safety while also decreasing the construction zone feel of the bump outs and make them look a little bit nicer. So that's what we're doing research on right now is the best option for replacing those orange jersey barriers. The hundred thousand that bid applied for is pretty wide ranging, but primarily Tim has told us he would use that money to support purchase of more robust and I don't know how to say it, well crafted parklet structures. So not easy ups and plastic tables and chairs, but help the business owners buy better structures. I think we linked to Colorado Parklets in the agenda doc. That's another success story out of this program. It's a local company that started and is shipping all over the the country now. So he would potentially buy structures from a company like that to support the program. And lastly, you asked about other funding. There is additional funding from C dot available, and we we want to get through this initial award that we got, show them that we, you know, spent the money responsibly, and then we may think about reapplying with them sort of early next year, but there is funding out there for that. The other thing that this has triggered is, you know, with restriping, do we want to start looking at a big C I P for redoing that main street section, moving curbs and gutters, those types of things, there'd obviously need to be a big planning effort before that. And we started to look for funds that could support a planning initiative and design work for something like that. So that would be a sort of a next phase, but.
Thank you. I appreciate that update. It would just be so nice. It's it's interesting to see other communities and some of the investments that they're making to help kind of their re main avenue, you know, rejuvenation projects and and it'd be nice to see if we could continue to help and support some of that basic infrastructure.
Thank you. Good questions. And yeah, the permanence of this as an urban planning project is is a real curiosity. And your last statement there, Scott was encouraging to think about, yeah, a permanent solution that would define the lanes and and some, e- even if the structures were temporary in nature, at least the space that they occupy is would be designated and and formalized in some permanent manner. That's a, that's a good challenge, good design effort. So thanks, thanks so much. And thanks also for giving us the the update on the urban renewal district. I didn't mean to interject, but as long as you're here, I want to take advantage of you. I must was on to twelve point two point two, which is a downtown Durango hotel update. And I believe that's what Kevin, are you gonna help us out with that one? Or Nicole? magically appeared and and what's the status of that hotel and which hotel are we talking about?
Good evening, Mayor Bricki and members of the council, Nicole Killian, Assistant Director for Community Development. And this is the hotel that some of us are calling the hole in the ground right now on Second Avenue between Fourth and Fifth Streets. At last week's study session, I believe councillor Bettin asked for staff to provide an update of that project. And so we did put together a quick agenda doc about the project and where it's at. And I've also been in communication with the development team recently to also get some updates from them. The project at the city level, we are pretty much ready to issue permits, whether that's a foundation or a full building permit. We've offered them both options for that site. They have in the previous six months, they've said that they don't want to pull a foundation only permit, that they actually want to pull the full building permit, and that has to do with financing. However, in discussions with them, COVID has sent them back a little bit in terms of their development efforts. They made it pretty clear to me that they have a lot invested in this property and that they do can want to continue on with it. And they said that banks are starting to loan more construction loans again. So they're hoping that it will pick back up soon. Where they're at right now is the the hotel is mainly going to be modular construction. So the foundation, which is two levels, it's a two level parking. So the foundation, which is two levels, it's a two level parking structure, is precast and tilt up. And so they've told me that the precast did start in the spring and they're more than fifty percent done with their pre, precast. Um, it is occurring in a large warehouse up in the Dakotas somewhere. I'm not sure North or South Dakota, so I'm not sure if the warehouse staff has been impacted, but they said that that slowed a little bit with the precast. But their plan is to finish a precast and get the foundation in. They said, once the precast is done, it should go up pretty fast for the foundation. Um, because it is tilt up. And then the modulators are, the two hundred and two hotel rooms are all modulars. So they come in one piece, each room, including all the fixtures, um, all the, the windows, everything comes installed and they ship them down to us. And again, I believe those are being done in a warehouse up in the Dakotas. Um, those get shipped down to us and put together, for lack of a better word, like Legos. Um, and they're connected through the in- interior corridors of the hotel. And so, um, because they did the modulators, the state of Colorado does all modular reviews in Colorado. And so Department of Local Affairs has a team that does that. And they completed their review July thirty first of this year. And so they really did not have final approvals to even move forward until July thirty first of this year for the, um, actual building permits. And so they told me that they will, um, give me a formal update in writing, but this was just a verbal communication with them. Um, again, like I said, we're offering to do the foundation. I think that that's something that they may consider because they're further along on their precast than they are on the modular units for the hotel rooms. And so I'm hoping that, um, in the near future, we'll be giving them a foundation permit so that they can start the foundation. Um, the shoring wall, we do, um, they have had, um, Troutner Geotech. They had Wilson Engine Structural Engineering. And then the guy who did the shoring, um, Jeff Franklin, they've done some inspections for the shoring wall, um, just because it is temporary in nature. Our last inspection report we received was at the end of May. So we've asked him for an updated report of how the wall is doing. And so we hope to have that soon as well. Um, and we'll know more information about that. What we did do, it's something we don't normally do for a project, but we asked for a letter of credit for that shoring wall. Um, this is normally what we would get for public improvements on a si- uh, project like road construction sidewalks, street trees, um, water sewer. So we did get a letter of credit for the shoring wall, um, almost half a million in that letter of credit. That will not expire till December of twenty twenty one. And so if there's any time where we feel like they are not cooperating, um, then we can use that funding. Um, we don't have to pull it in whole, we can pull, um, just, uh, small amounts out and we could hire someone to do the inspection for us if we feel the city needs to do that. Um, and also do other mitigations for that law if we feel necessary. Um, so that's kind of where things are with that and I definitely am available if you have any questions that I can answer.
Chris, go for it.
Yeah, thank you so much, Nicole. I, uh, my question really is, did you, when do you expect that next inspection? And, uh, can we just make sure this gets back on the calendar to update us at that time, uh, when you know more?
Yeah, I've asked them to get it to us in the next two weeks. Um, um, so we've, hopefully we'll get that soon and I can definitely give you updates as we move forward. Our plan is when they do decide to actually pull the permit is to also do a neighborhood meeting. Um, I do communicate with neighbors regularly, um, but there's quite a few that do not contact us. Um, so we, um, have a list and we'd like to do another neighborhood meeting when we get to that point before they start construction as well to inform all the neighbors.
Thank you.
Anybody else with some comments? If not, I have a couple. All right, you know, I, I appreciate Nicole, that was great. And I think the primary concern for residents and the health, safety, welfare of our community is the, the big hole. And the, the, uh, anytime you have an unsupported excavation of that nature, I think it's pretty scary. But you know, the other dialogue that they're given, that they've extended to you was the fact that they, uh, uh, the financing was somehow held up, but somehow they're baking precast concrete up in North Dakota. So there's spending money without, uh, with, you know, without funding. That seems really highly irregular, how they haven't been able to close on their construction money, but they are somehow magically making precast units that out of state uh, without a building permit. Uh, something's out of sequence here, totally, totally, totally.
Well, I can add a little bit, that, that's where they're from. The developers are from the Dakotas.
Yeah.
Um, but they're also, once the state signed off on the modulators, the state told them they can start the precast well, even without the city's permit. So that's why they started the precast.
That's an interesting thing to do with that construction.
The modulators, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm sure we'll be, we'll be on that and, uh, able to obtain all the correspondence between the state and the, because that's, um, you know, I, i- it's highly irregular, they would be producing and spending that much money without a, a local permit, uh, and taking that risk. So it just makes me, uh, feel like they, uh, they're not risk adverse, uh, and.
Well, there's no reason why we would deny the permit. I think that they know we're ready to issue it, so maybe that's what we have a comfort level as well.
Yeah, but, yeah, and it's, it's not ours to regulate their financing or anything else. It's just to make sure that, uh, that building gets built, uh, with, with all the necessary, um, inspections ultimately. So anyway, well, thanks, thanks for that update and, uh, any other questions from the council? Um, we look forward to that next inspection then to see, uh, before it has a foot of snow on this, uh, and has a excessive surcharge. So, uh, then with that council reports and actions, I'm, uh, I'm, I'm going to pass because, uh, Scott covered me on the urban renewal authority aspects and, uh, it's getting late again this evening, but, uh, any other, uh, reports and actions from council? Uh, Mayor Pro Tim Baxter.
Yes, thank you Dean. So it's, it's that time of year when we all committed to do, um, our appointee evaluations. And we're at a place now where for Amber, when she was interim city manager, the council should be getting together to have a discussion. And, um, so I wanted to ask about possible dates for an executive session to do so. And I know that Jose has appointee evaluations tentatively on the schedule for the November tenth study session. So, um, I think that's what you're, so I wasn't sure what that was speaking to because we haven't had a chance to talk yet. But, um, I wanted to know when we might be able to, as council, get together for an executive session to have the interim city manager conversation um, between councillors to come to a unified voice for Amber.
Excellent, uh, yeah, I don't know if we can, uh, accomplish the scheduling here this evening. Uh, I'm in Los Angeles for a week, so it won't be this week until, but, uh,
Well, maybe we request that we start doing some sort of a poll, figure out when we can all get together and do that. How's that sound?
Right, yeah, if we can have, uh, Karen do that, uh, Jose, did you have a thought on scheduling?
Uh, I was just trying to figure out the other evaluations on November tenth. I didn't have that on my calendar.
No, it's, I was, oh, oh, I'm sorry, it says goals, I apologize.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I was, uh, did I miss something? Where was I at? Okay, I'm good.
And this will be just, uh, council and, and, uh, um, interim city manager, former interim city manager Amber Blake, uh, and so, uh, if.
Uh, so the, the, so the, the process would be that council gets together and of course Amber has the right to have it be public if she wants to. But council can gather in an executive session to become unified in their voice. And then we would have, um, probably as we did last year, the mayor and the mayor pro ten and would meet with Amber to give that one voice conversation.
Excellent, okay. Well, perhaps we can, uh, have, uh, Karen send out a Google poll and, uh, I'd be available early next week, uh, anytime next week to try to accomplish that task and then, uh, and then, um, it then have a, a designated team to talk to Amber directly at, uh, at the appropriate time. So that's, if that sounds good with Amber as well.
So are, are we looking at a executive session before or after the study session of next week? Or in worst case scenario, in two weeks in front of the next, um, city council meeting?
I would say as soon as possible would be fabulous because we have to have two, at least two meetings to get this all done. So, and we were supposed to, I believe, I think you reminded me Barbara, this was our obligation was to have these finished on December fifteenth. Yeah, so.
I believe that's what we agreed to last year. That was for all appointees somewhere in mid-December. For all, so that would be the judge and also the city attorney.
Right, so that brings up my other comment, which is that I'll be sending out the review evaluation forms for both the judge and the city attorney to council tomorrow with a recommended, um, timeline for getting those filled out, getting them back and doing the same thing with them, so.
Uh, perhaps it's, uh, given, given those two additional, uh, evaluations and the completion of those, uh, would we want to go into executive session to, uh, discuss all three? Uh, or would you feel like we should get back with Amber prior? We're prepared to do that, obviously, at this point. Uh, I just.
Amber's is a much more in-depth, complex conversation, so maybe we do that separately from the other two.
Okay.
Right.
I think we could be able to respond it, like you said, if you distribute those tomorrow, we might be able to get them all three. If we tacked, uh, an, an hour onto our study session next week, uh, we could, we could discuss all three of them, uh, perhaps.
Okay, I think I can probably have time to compile them all after you give me your responses back, so I'll try to do that, yeah.
If we're fast.
Yeah.
If anybody's still walking after the election and things like that, so, uh, yeah. Let's, 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 let's look at, uh, an executive session at minimum to deal with Amber's, uh, cop, uh, uh, unified council discussion, uh, in an executive session following the, uh, uh, study session next week.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Kim, and.
And I'm sorry, I might have missed it. Kim, what is the deadline for getting the feedback for the other two to you?
I will send.
You'll send it out, okay.
I have to look at my calendar and organize it. I, I'm going to assume it could be by Sunday that you'd have to get back to me by, so I'm going to try to give you time and give me time.
Right, and, and, and thank you, Kim. Uh, yeah, I didn't mean to put that, uh, put the rush on it. It just seems efficient to do a one executive session if possible, if, if that works. If it doesn't, then.
I agree, no, I agree with you. That's a great idea.
Alrighty, uh, uh, former mayor Youssef, uh, you have any thoughts, uh, council reports and actions this evening?
Uh, no, uh, just very quickly, I was going to follow up on the, uh, emails we've been receiving on the Anamis View Drive speed limit and I wasn't sure where we were. I know that went to multimodal. I know councillor Knowsworthy, you've been kind of sending emails about. So I just, with, with the other one that we just received today, I wasn't sure, uh, where that might be, staff or, or wherever. I just wanted to get a quick update if we could.
It is with, uh, staff and we're working on it. We have right now, ten it'll be scheduled for that to come to the council on December eighth, uh, at the study session to talk about the plan of action and recommendation, uh, to grab council's approval to move forward.
Excellent, thank you. Jose, great question, Melissa, appreciate you bringing that up.
Well, they. And, and I want to clarify that while the Anamis View Drive has got most of the public comment coming in, the recommendation from multimodal was to address both that and eighth in college and then some areas around schools. So they had a, a larger recommendation than just that one street.
Excellent, interesting, okay.
Um, it came before all of us on July twenty fifth or whatever the day was of our study session.
Okay. All right, uh, Chris, uh, councillor Bettin, do you have any, any, uh, reports and actions or?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, excellent, and, uh, councillor Knowsworthy?
Uh, yeah, I had just, uh, one to report on. It was the Community Relations Commission, which met as a group and then we met with the advisory board. But some of the items that came up were, um, a real discussion around implementing our diversity, equity and inclusion goals and helping council and the staff address that. Um, ar- areas around, um, translation, appreciating the new efforts that are going on, uh, with translating on our website, but also issues around making, uh, meetings like this, uh, accessible to people where English may not be their, uh, first language. Um, also, we talked about the listening sessions that took place. And I, I know Melissa filled in for me in September for that. And the issue of making certain that everyone feels comfortable, um, speaking. And we're really looking at, the, the commission's really looking at, maybe there's some different, um, ways of doing that where people might feel safe. They're also looking at the resolution, needing to change that to actually have a liaison, possibly expanding the, um, number of commissioners from five to seven to be more in line with what other commissions look like. And then one of the questions that came up, and I've asked, um, Suzanne Sutter and, um, and Sandy Erwin to help us with, is we have some resolutions that were passed by previous councils. And the question is, are, do they ever, are they ever rescinded or once they're passed? Is that kind of the expectation that we should all be living according to and, or celebrating? And there's two in particular. I think in twenty sixteen, uh, Mayor, I think you may have been the one that even signed it, the Indigenous People Day, celebrating, you know, a certain Tuesday in, in October. I think it's the second Tuesday in October. So once that's passed, we don't need to necessarily re, um, you know, re-sign or sign a new, uh, resolution, but just still celebrating it. But the one that was of most importance that came up was a two thousand and four resolution about Durango being a safe haven. And I've asked to, um, have a copy of that and maybe for us to look at it, um, if that still seems appropriate for the things we want Durango to be. Um, so I just wanted to get some clarity on from, uh, the city attorney, not necessarily now, but, um, the process for once a resolution is passed, what is our accountability and our, um, is our commitment to that going forward?
Thank you, uh, Barbara, I, I, I'd like to, uh, review a, uh, yeah, the, the, the safe haven ordinance, if it was in fact an ordinance for any of our time, obviously, but the, the term and utilization of safe haven to, uh, semantics is, uh, perhaps quite different than it was in two thousand and four. So it certainly deserves a reevaluation for, uh, the, the legality, the impact, uh, what it means to our community as well as the, uh, if it's still appropriate in its current form. So, uh, that would be appropriate. Perhaps Dirk, if we can just, like, get that one out for, you can send it out to us for, at your leisure.
I know this was, uh, was the emails out and I'll ever get those to you, um, so. And the answer is they remain in force until they're repealed or they're amended. Um, and the attention they garner is really up to council to, uh, uh, to, to decide, but they still are in force until they're repealed.
Thank you, so one of the recommendations that came out of the commission was maybe that we have these compiled. So new city councillors and also the new commission leader members are aware of what previous councils have, um, created and committed to. And so, you know, we have a sense of the history behind that as well. So that's a recommendation I pass on as we think about, uh, modifying our onboarding for both our boards and commission members, but also for future city council members.
All right, well, uh, yeah, there, I, there's a number of those issues, obviously, but, uh, yeah, so it's quite a book. But, uh, yeah, that is, uh, how, how can we bring these, those salient features, uh, into, uh, our onboarding process, I think is what you're suggesting, so.
And then I just finally wanted to call out two days, two things this month that I wanted the community to be aware of and maybe for council to think about our participation in. And that is Native American Month, celebration of Native Americans and, um, Transgender Day of Remembrance on November twentieth that the Unitarian Church and the Fort Lewis College will be hosting. You know, Dean, I know last year you spoke at that and I think it's very important for city council to have representation. So I'm, I'm hoping that.
will be hosting. You know, Dean, I know last year you spoke at that, and I think it's very important for city council to have representation. So I'm I'm hoping that we'll have a presence at that again this year.
Sure, Jude will be calling and if not, I'll reach out to him. Absolutely, Jude Harrison is and look forward, look forward to that. Absolutely. That was a pretty moving experience. With there's no other items, I just I'll close with the, we had the Oxbow opening last week and we had a Melissa and Chris were both there and and a couple of our actually, we didn't have any of our former city councilors there, which was unfortunate just because of the timing and notification. So it was a culmination of a lot of hard work on on this council and former city councils part. And it was just a glorious day out there to look down from the parking lot and all the improvements that have been made. And from a design standpoint, it is a real major asset to the city of Durango and knowing that the larger portion of it is also a park and preserve for species of birds, species of flora and fauna. So it's as well as an active component for the put in and picnic shelter or picnic areas and beach area for a really spectacular part of the river right through there. It's very quiet water and good for paddle boarding and family activities that are in not such a dangerous part of the river. So it was really awesome. And and thanks for our media crew, the Mitchell and Victor for putting together a really great presentation of of the trail components as well as the opening ceremony. So that was really great to be a participant in that. And with that, if there's no other discussion for this evening, we can adjourn this November second twenty virtual city hall. And if I I should be remiss if I didn't ask our community to go out and vote tomorrow. Obviously, it's election day. If that's why we're meeting today on Monday.